All right, six o'clock. A call to order the first ever organizational meeting for the Rock Ridge Public Schools District. The public may access school board agendas by visiting the district webpage and clicking on District Information, Board of Agenda, Agenda Minutes Board Book. Now, please rise for the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Moving on to roll call. Director Genalini. I see him there. Director Sorkin.
Here.
Director Addy.
Here.
Director Schoburg.
Here.
Director Yuan.
I'm here for the moment. I got baseball starting here soon, so I'll dip out when I have to leave. So I'm here for the moment.
All right, sounds good. Thanks. Director Sather.
Here.
Director Lotiger.
Here.
Director Anderson.
Here.
Director Tamaro.
Here.
Director Sunquist.
Present.
Director Baraboo.
Here.
And Director Riordan.
Present.
And Director Mannanen, present. Number four, approve the organizational meeting agenda. Can I get a motion in a second to approve?
So moved by Director Sunquist.
Support by Director Lotiger.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a clarification and a question, I think a suggestion. On the bottom where it says that we will vote by a show of hands or a vote. These meetings have to be roll call votes, so that that won't cut the mustard there as far as, I guess, what's required. And then I would suggest that we don't have a local roll call vote. Have a secret ballot some other, and then have those results made public after. And I don't know that the moderator for Zoom can do.
You can't have a secret ballot.
You can if you make the if you make the things like right after the vote. It's a paper ballot. We've done it before and it's totally allowed.
And that's impossible to do in a Zoom meeting. I do not support that.
It's
I do not either.
It would be it would be possible to either text into the moderator secretary or to email.
Right now, right now, the motion in front of us is to approve the agenda, not to debate something else.
Well, that that is part of the agenda. I'm sorry. Just it has everything to do with how we how we handle the voting of the officers.
This is a public board. Our votes should be public.
They they are public. After you, after you do a paper ballot, then they become public and you read what everybody, how everybody voted. I think it's important that in a roll call vote, that the first person and the last person, last person, nobody knows what somebody else's vote is going to be. And that's not guaranteed by a roll call vote. Somebody's going to be inning, in the middle, and at the end. And that's that's my whole reasoning for that.
I mean, this is a this is a public meeting. I don't know why we want to keep people's votes secret. But Polly, Polly, if you want to make a motion to amend the agenda to add those, then we'll wait and see if you have a second.
Exactly. And that's exactly what my amendment would be, is to have a paper ballot that after the, after the results are in by someone collecting it, that then each person's vote becomes the the public vote, so it will be public.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second?
Fails.
Okay, motion fails. Um. And any more discussion on the meeting agenda? Yeah, all those in favor signify by
Excuse me, Greg. I'm I'm sorry. If by approving the agenda, there there are some, you know, items particularly on the consent agenda that I'd have a few questions on. So does do they have to be removed from the consent agenda at this time, or? How 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 do we handle that?
We'd have to remove them from the consent agenda. Which items are you looking at?
Um, just I have some questions over the the hires. Particularly given that we we have absolutely, the the Evelyn Gilbert members have no insight at all into the the hires. And just looking for some explanations as to how that happened and were the teachers that, you know, because we're in a different position where we we laid off several years and were they considered?
I agree. Thank you, Matt, for catching that. I would like a discussion on that as well.
And I was going to suggest those be removed to 12-8 also through 12-16. And 12-8 has to do with our our REA membership. And then 12-9 through 12-9 through 12 are the hiries, and then 12-13 to 12-16 are resignations. And I have some questions about those.
I mean, really moving on, we all, I mean, we can move them, but we all get this agenda beforehand. If you want something moved off consent agenda for discussion in order to keep the meeting moving along, you could always get a hold of Noel or whoever the chair is and get them moved.
Well, to we vote on this to to change the agenda or to remove them from the agenda.
Okay, I'm looking at. I'm gonna move 12, 9, 10, 11, and 12. Those are the hires. And I'm gonna put them at 14, 11, 14, 12, 14, 13, and 14, 14.
Move them to the regular items.
And that's where they are at in administration.
And and I would, I have just a quick question about 12-13 to 12-16, the rest. That will only, just very short.
Well, I'll give you the time on that. If you want to comment on that right now, I'm not going to move it off to the consent agenda.
Okay, that's fine. So my question was, when we have these resignations, do we not need replace these people? Do we post and advertise, or are we not replacing those people? That was my question.
Um, all those positions are either posted or in the process of being filled. Is that right, Noel?
Um, yes, that is right, but first you have to accept a resignation in many cases before position can be filled. So the first step for the board normally is to accept a resignation before we would go out and post for the position. Sports are a little different, but especially for any full-time vacancies, you have to accept the resignation first, generally speaking.
Okay, thank you.
The only other thing, a member from our collaborative meeting is suggested that our agenda also include unfinished. And I don't know where we discuss that as whether we want to add that to the agenda or not as a vote. I don't know where you want to put that.
We have unfinished businesses. This is our first meeting as a board.
I know, but to put it on for for the future as one of our regular agenda items. And we, Evelyn Gilbert had board member topics, too. I don't know when we would discuss whether we wanted to add unfinished business and board member topics or not.
I I I would just suggest that, I mean, we we have such a hefty agenda. That once we have the chair and the 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 chair and consult with Dr. Schmidt, can we 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 can consider those items at our next meeting.
I mean, that's a good, like a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. It should should be up to the next chair.
And then I'd like to add on this to that. We're going to be approving some minutes of the, on 12-2 on your January 8, 2020 meeting. Oh, Gilbert, Evelyn Gilbert did have a couple of meetings since then, and you know, for approving the minutes of your meetings, we should also be approving the minutes of our last meeting as well, but it's not on here.
Well, I think because ours had to do with a contract, a negotiate, a contract resolution, probably.
Well. And if we don't have them, we could, we can add yours on the next.
Yeah. And Bill, once again, I mean, this was out, you know, a couple of days ago, you know, we could have added it then if you would have saw it. Okay, any more discussion?
Is it appropriate for like we, Evelyn Gilbert members to vote on minutes that we weren't asked?
There's no longer an Evelyn Gilbert School District or a Virginia School District.
Well, we, you're right, but we've always abstained if we hadn't been at a meeting.
I understand.
All right, I mean, what's that, Polly?
If it's in the consent agenda, I could not abstain to 12.3, I mean, to the other one. You know, it's no, let's just do it.
Yep, you can vote no or yes or whatever you want to do. Okay, we had the motion, we had a second, we had discussion. All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Don't we need a roll call vote on telepresence?
No, not on the agenda, no. Okay. Moving on to five, election of board officers. At this time, I will take nominations for chairperson.
I would like to nominate.
Okay, I got Gail with Director Sunquist, and I have Brandy with
Director Addy. Director Addy.
Okay, any more nominations? Any more nominations? Okay, we had two or more for the position. So for the first one will be for Director Sunquist. And we'll do a roll call. Director Genalini. For Director Sunquist for Board Chair.
With 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 two, and I I don't know, just wouldn't it be easier just to say the name of the person we're voting for? That's how I've seen in the past, but I I don't know.
No, it's easier, you know, in person, but we'll just do it for this. Can I get Director Genalini for a, yea or nay for Director Sunquist for Board Chair?
No, he said, no.
Okay, Director Sorkin.
No.
Director Addy.
No.
Director Yuan.
No.
Director Sather.
Yes.
Director Lotiger.
No.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Tamaro.
Yes.
Director Sunquist.
Yes.
Director Baraboo.
Yes.
Director Riordan.
Yes.
And then I am also, yes.
Do I get a vote?
Director, sorry. Why do I always forget you, Matt?
I don't know. I'm unforgettable.
Director Schoburg.
No.
Seven, six. Seven, six.
Okay, so I, if my math is correct, that's seven, six in favor of Director Sunquist. Now, do I got to go through with another vote for Bill then?
No.
No.
I don't know, and I I just, I I got it. I I just don't like the way this has been handled to this point. And I I don't think that was a good way to to do it, and
How are we supposed to do it, Matt?
You you ask, you you have, you have two people. You ask for either say Director Sunquist or Director Addy.
We we, that's what we just did.
No, we didn't. You made people say yes or no to one of the nominees. Let's let's move on.
Yeah. All right, Director Sunquist. Please take over the meeting.
Okay, at this point, I would entertain nominations for a vice chair.
I would like to make a motion for
Sather, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion for Bill Addy.
I'll support that. Kim Riordan.
I'd like to nominate Kelly Sather.
And that was Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Is there a second on that?
Do you really need a second? You just, you don't need a second, do you? On any of these, do you?
I don't think so.
No.
Any other nominations? All those in favor, go ahead. Who was that?
Can I just add that I'm I'm looking at this for in light of the joint, the joint board, and what a good job they did and how current they are on everything that has been done so far, and that is my reasoning between wanting you both to have those.
All right. Uh, any, any other nominations? Any other, or any?
I have one question, Stacy. What you should do is ask Bill and if if they want to be nominated, because if they don't want to be nominated, then we would not have to go through a vote.
That was next on my list, Director Riordan. Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. Just wanted to make sure that there weren't any other nominations. Hearing none, Director Addy, do you accept your nomination?
Ask Kelly first.
I asked you first, Director Addy.
I nominated you, Director Addy. So are you by my nomination?
Are you turning down your nomination, Director Sather?
Yeah, I think I I think Director Addy has done a phenomenal job as our chair for the last two years, and I was pleased that he accepted it this year again. And so I think I think it's important to have a good representation of our new board members, so I would love to see Director Addy as the vice chair.
Well, with no further ado, Director Addy, the job is yours if you're accepting of it.
I will accept it.
Thank you. Um, next on the agenda is electing a clerk. Do I have nominations for clerk?
I would like to nominate Kelly Sather.
Director Sather, do you accept?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations for the clerk? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? So at that, Director Sather, you are the new clerk of the Rock Ridge School Board. Next is the treasurer. Do I have any nominations for treasurer?
I nominate Marie Anderson.
I would, I will nominate Matt Schoburg.
Any other nominations?
I I I do not accept. Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Director Anderson, do you accept? You're muted, but it looked like you said yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And then finally, I would open the floor for a nomination for alternate clerk.
I'd like to nominate Matt Schoburg.
Do you accept, Director Schoburg?
All right, all right. I said no once. That's enough. I will.
Thank you for being Minnesota nice. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, Director Schoburg, the job is yours. Agenda item number six is to set regular meeting dates and times. And I I think we kind of touched on this last time where we talked about. I think both boards traditionally have met twice a month. I think we talked about the importance of having those be work, you know, official meeting time, official meetings. Do I have a motion for uh, setting dates and times for our Rock Ridge School Board meetings?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we have our board meetings on the second and fourth Monday of each month.
Are you including a time in your in your motion?
6:00 PM.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Do we know where these meetings are going to take place by any, any, when?
I think that's something that we also have to decide.
I mean, I mean, has anybody got any ideas where we can all gather? Eventually, we're going to all have to gather at some.
Yeah, hope hopefully sooner rather than later, as far as I'm concerned. My only, my only suggestion would be if if we can, you know, find it, find a spot in one of the districts to start and then kind of alternate a- a- at least for the the time being.
I like that idea.
Yeah, and I'm fine as long as we have room for all of us and for
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And we can social distance with the the current protocols and all that fun stuff.
Yeah.
Hopefully not have to wear masks.
I have a clarification that part of the meeting needs to be rescheduled. It will happen the next day, same place, same time. You have due to weather, I think, last year, our board resolution just said for any reason, does that matter? If it's just for inclement
I I think in light of COVID, that has taught us that we need to plan for beyond inclement weather.
Well, I would make an amendment and if the meeting needs to be rescheduled for it will be rescheduled the next day, same time, same place.
That's fine.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll accept the the addition.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so this is a, any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Director Sather.
Yes.
Director Mannanen.
Yes.
Director Genalini.
Can you hear?
Director Genalini.
Sure, yes.
Okay, thank you. Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Tamaro.
Yes.
Director Lotiger.
Yes.
Director Schoburg.
Yes.
Director Riordan.
Yes.
Director Baraboo.
Yes.
Director Sorkin.
Yes.
Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Yuan.
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Motion passes.
Director Sather is a yes.
Oh, sorry. I thought I got you first.
That's okay. I'm writing down names, so I weren't to go through the 13 also, so.
Good, I, that's a good idea. Next item on the agenda is setting the salaries of board directors. Traditionally, Virginia board members were reimbursed $250 a month with the chair receiving 300. Looks like Evelyn Gilbert board members were receiving 250 per month with a stipend paid semi-monthly. And then in Virginia, board members serving on a negotiating committee was $45 for each session up to five hours and $75 for sessions of five hours or more. Do I have a motion regarding board member salary?
I'll make the motion.
Who was that?
Merrill.
I missed it. Was that you, Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Turn your mic on.
Geez. You can't.
Is there support? I'm sorry, I have barking dogs. Is there a support?
Support.
I'll I'll give that to Director Lotiger. I will take a roll call vote again. Director Sather.
Yes.
Director Mannanen.
Yes.
Director Schmidt, or sorry, Director Genalini.
Yes.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Tamaro.
Yes.
Director Lotiger.
Yes.
Director Schoburg.
Sorry, yes.
Director Riordan.
Yes.
Director Baraboo.
Yes.
Director Sorkin.
Yes.
Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Yuan.
Yes, and this is, I'm gonna dip out after this.
Okay, enjoy the game, enjoy the game. And Director Sunquist is also a yes. Motion passes.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, John.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Next, I would entertain a motion to designate school depositories, France and Bank and Trust, MSD, LAF, and Minnesota Trust slash PMA, Miners National Bank, and First National Bank of Gilbert. I don't know if either Spencer Awney or Director or Dr. Schmidt want to kind of explain this.
I can, I can explain this to Spencer. Um, these are all the banks that currently Evelyn Gilbert and Virginia districts did use. And because the state will be still sending money to those districts to clean up this past school year and to then also to start the Rock Ridge dollars, we'd like to have all the same bank accounts for this next year. And then we can look at maybe changing it a following year, but I think for this first year, it would be good to have some consistency and have all the same bank.
Okay, so the recommendation is to keep things as as is.
I'll move.
Okay, motion by Director Baraboo. Who is support?
Sather, sorry.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do another roll call vote. Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Sorkin.
Yes.
Director Baraboo.
Yes.
Director Riordan.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Director Schoburg.
Yes.
Director Lotiger.
Yes.
Director Tamaro.
Yes.
Director Sather.
Yes.
Director Mannanen.
Yes.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
And Director Genalini.
Yes.
Thank you. And Director Sunquist is a yes as well. Next under organizational business is authorize the hiring of school board or of a school attorney on an as needed basis. Generally, the district uses the services of Colosimo, Patchen, and Carney as primary legal with secondary councils as Rupp, Anderson, Squires, and Walzberger, and Ratwick, Rosick, and Maloney. And I, and I think that Superintendent Schmidt can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're looking at just maintaining the status quo on that as well, I think.
Yes, we are recommending more attorneys than normally you would recommend, only because we have two districts coming into one, and we think it would be prudent to continue using the same attorneys who have dealt, and we've worked with on a number of different cases.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, Riordan.
Back in.
Okay, support by Schoburg. Any further discussion?
Are these in any particular order as they are, just as needed per their expertise?
Well, the motion suggests that we have Colosimo, Patchen, and Carney, which of course is the local firm, is our primary counsel. And then the secondary councils be the other two law firms that were noted.
All right.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, another roll call vote. Director Sather.
Yes.
Director Mannanen.
Yes.
Director Genalini. Director Genalini. Yes. Director Anderson. Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Schobert?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Motion passes.
Can I just ask, is there any way to get Tom to be able to hear us, be able to hear what his votes are? Or any, any way to help with that?
I mean, get him closer to Murray and Tom. I see they're in the same room.
Um, yes, they are. This is Noel. We can, but we need to keep folks six feet apart. We will fix this problem next time. But this is the best we can do. I will move a little bit closer to Tom, so you're about to see him in 3D.
He can, he can speak up too.
I'm sure he's having a hard, he's having a hard time hearing and I think he can, but.
Because he has nothing in front of him, so.
Yeah. Um.
And you're pretty easily because of the speakers.
Next, under organizational business is consider authorizing the business manager and superintendent to make electronic fund transfers. This is authorizing them to yeah, like making money or changing money from savings to checkings and things like that.
So moved.
So move by Director Baraboo, is there support?
Support.
By Director Lotiger. Any other discussion or any questions? Hearing none, another roll call vote. Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Genalini? Director Genalini? Are you in favor of the motion?
I smell Tom. Got to yell.
What was that?
Well, I guess that one, you can't hear me, huh? You hear me now? Okay, what is the warning out here?
Hey, hey Murray and Tom Tamaro, get him closer to the, get him closer to you guys. You guys are closer than six feet. When you're ready across his desk from each other.
Yes.
All right, Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Schobert?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes.
Thank you, Murray, for moving closer.
Thank you, Murray.
You're welcome.
The next agenda item is the committee memberships. A committee, a membership, oh, man, my iPad keeps blitzing out. I think there was the blank roster that was attached. And I think the idea was, why, I guess, how do we want to put together committee memberships?
Madam Chair, this is Noel talking. The background for this is what we did is we took the Ebleth Gilbert Committee list, and then we took the Virginia Committee list, and we merged them together to make them about as equal using the same numbers from Ebleth Gilbert, Virginia. So what you're seeing is our suggested recommended list of committees. So this is combining Ebleth Gilbert's Committee list and Virginia's Committing list. So this would be our recommendation. The only one I want to point out that maybe the school board would like to maybe think about doing differently. Currently, right now, the city council, there's one position. However, we have multiple city councils, so the board may want to consider whether one person should be the rep for all three city councils, Virginia, Ebleth, and Gilbert, or whether you want to have three or two. That's the only one I want to point out right now to the school board.
And that's the one I had written down that Ebleth person who Ebleth pretty council, Ebleth person, Ebleth pretty council, I think. That's the one that I looked at also.
Uh, Director Sunquist?
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
My, my Zoom went out and we're on six point seven?
Yes.
Did, when my Zoom cleared out, did we already do six point six?
Yes, that's what happened. Okay, there's so many boxes on the screen. I just knew they all moved around a bit. I apologize for that, Director Riordan.
Oh, that's fine. I just, my Zoom went dead, so I thought maybe I missed it. I'm sorry.
Um. Okay, so now we've got the looking for a motion on committee memberships.
I have some.
Go ahead, Matt.
Um, I, I do have a, one, one question. Now, VEA, I assume is that Virginia Education Association?
Yes.
And I mean, the negotiations will be combined as far as that goes next year, correct? It'll be with the entire teacher bargaining unit. So I, I just, I just think we might want to change the name of that committee.
Yes.
Probably just to a negotiations committee? Would that be sufficient?
But I do see that we, we have principal negotiation committee, Ask Me Negotiation Committee, so.
So what, just teacher?
A big teacher.
Or Emmy.
Ho, ho, however we do it, I really don't have any opinion other than I think it should be changed.
Yeah, agreed.
I suggest that we have one negotiating team for all of the units, because then there's consistency, you know, you know, things about services and about health and in Ebleth Gilbert, we had one negotiating committee. I think it's better instead of different people having to come on board for different things, because there's so many things that are the same. And so I would suggest that. And then we also had, and I think it worked well, we had committees of the whole for budget, finance, personnel, policy, and facilities, and I don't see why we couldn't have that committees of a whole or just put those things on regular agendas.
My, my concern for the, having so many committees on the whole is it is really hard to be able to get work done, and I've been a firm believer of being able to, you know, the committees being able to help guide and dig in, dig into the weeds that need to be done, and as an entire board, especially a board of 13, it's really hard to do that.
I, I absolutely agree.
And especially, I, I think that the committee of the whole, and we got to be able to trust each other to pass along information and to be doing right by the district and the kids. So I don't think committee of the whole is necessary.
In lieu of a committee of the whole, certain things could be just agenda items for full meetings. I, I think budget and finance is one of the biggest ones, are major statutory responsibilities and.
I, I would agree with that, Director Sorkin, except we've done it with a smaller finance committee and approved it, and we've balanced our budget the last several years where your prior board did not. So I, I would advocate having a smaller finance committee and bringing that to the full board. Because again, like Director Saether pointed out, we're able to dig into the weeds and ask some questions that it would be very difficult for a whole board to do, especially considering the bulk of the work the board needs to to complete in this next year. Stacy.
I, 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 I agree with, with what you're saying, Chair Sunquist, to a great extent, but please don't throw us under the bus for the lack of action on a budget that was never brought to our attention.
I agree, has nothing to do with the balanced budget or not, and there's just.
I like, the one thing that, though we have small committees, it still goes back to the board. They make recommendation and we have full discussion at the board level. But they give the input on why they made the choices they made, so the committee of the whole at the board meeting will hear everything, but they won't have, have the intense hours put in. So I agree. Not having.
It's it's much easier to find meeting dates for a smaller group of people than an entire board for different issues as well. So can I said in lieu of a committee, a committee pool, having things on the agenda. I, I feel strongly that all board members should answer totally all information and background just from, just from committee reports. It's just not possible. And then up to four, four out of 13 is only about a third of our, of our total board now. I think that's a small number, and is it going to be mixed up between former Virginia board members and former Ebleth Gilbert board members for these committees, or what? Four out of 13? Amount of, it's, it's not even a, it's way less than a quarter. I feel there should be representatives of both Ebleth and Virginia on these committees. I, I believe that everyone should have a voice.
I agree, Gail.
I think what we're trying to do now is figure out how we're going to put together our committee memberships.
There's another one that Ebleth Gilbert had, but we never got around to doing it, and I think maybe this joint commit, joint board should have it, would be a labor management committee. We can establish that and add that to our committee roster. And I see some of them have one representative. Of course, it's RAMS, it's Indian Ed, IR, and legislative liaison. We also have MREA. We have to add that because I'm a representative for that one rep. Tim, are you the RAM representative?
I am.
Stacy is.
Okay, you're, you know, keep carrying it over to the joint, I mean, to the consolidating, okay.
And I'm looking at that, and I know we have meet and confer with the VA. Well, now it's not VA, but we have meet and confer with our teacher unions on a regular basis. I think it's once quarterly. I'd like to see that on there. And I think with Ask Me, I think we were asking on our last contract negotiations to try and get a meet and confer going again, because I think we used to have it. But now they don't want it.
Ebleth Gilbert used to have it too, and we tried to resurrect it, but there was so much going on that it never got off the go, so.
So I, I would like to say, see at least meet and confer for the teacher unions on there. I don't know if it could be the same people that are on the teacher negotiation committee, but should be on there.
Question, are negotiations in Virginia typically during the workday?
Yes.
Like the principals, uh, principals last time it was in the afternoons. So.
So how do we want to go forward on this?
I, myself, I would like everybody to depict three or four.
Why don't we, you hear me?
Wait, Director Riordan was just speaking.
And submit it to the chair and and they will debate, trying to give everybody, you know, equal representation. And I also would like the MREA added and Northeast Service Co-op added to that with the meet and confer.
Or we.
Oh, I'm sorry, Director Lotiger. I was going to let Director Addy jump in.
Sure.
Oh, I was going to say, on our, our typical meetings are, we would send a spreadsheet on whatever committee you want to sign up on, you just signed up on it. I mean, that kind of made it simple.
And I was going to suggest that maybe, like Gail had said, have representation from the old Ebleth Gilbert District and the old Virginia School District and sign up and being there's 13 of us, there's a few more being added. I was just thinking at least one, every, each of us choose at least one. Potentially a second one and sign up for an alternate. I think that that would be appropriate.
Um. I, I, I think, I mean, to, to make sure we have enough people, volunteers for all the committees, I, I would suggest that each of us sign, I mean, number them one through five and submit a list of, of, of five for consideration.
There's 22 right now committees, and there's 13 of us, so we will all at least be on two. And some may want to be on three, and the ones that are up to four people, I mean, I think we should just submit what our desires are and see how it pans out.
I kind of like that. And then how about if Director Addy and I get together and kind of flush out the final committee assignments?
Yeah, because it's only going to be for five.
Yeah.
It's for five.
And there may be a couple of them, like if Paul, if Director Sorkin was.
You cut out Stacy.
Sorry, am I back?
You're back.
I was just going to say, Director Sorkin was saying she's on the MREA board, and I am on the RAMS board, so there's a couple committees that I think people are committed to already.
So you know, those, I, I was just going to mention that because those, I wouldn't really consider those committees, I would just consider those represent representatives, because it's a process. So I think we can close out of the committee list, don't you?
Well, I, I just want, I just think that we should acknowledge that that does take a certain bit of time out of your schedule for a school board business.
And Northeast Service Co-op, that's just one person?
Correct.
That you did?
Yes.
Okay, so it, it's not really a committee. The other one that we have, we have a recreational board, but that's all probably going to change in the, in the meantime. We have, we appoint have a joint rec board. How do we handle that?
Oh, yeah, I think that's under community, community and rec board.
It, yes, it's there.
It's about the fifth one, dog.
Yeah, I, I, I see it now, okay. But does Virginia have a record tool? Representative? We don't, okay.
We have a book, don't representative on it.
Okay, we'll figure that out.
What, Director Anderson?
Needs to have the opening, to put down five or six things that we are really interested in and get them back to you and Bill.
Right, are you making that motion right now?
I'd like to make that motion.
I'll support it. So there is a motion by Director Anderson. Who was the support for that? I missed it.
All of us.
Um, any further discussion?
We also have a channel 12. We appoint two people to channel 12. We don't know what's going to happen with channel 12. And I'm just hoping that you didn't forget labor management, and we all agree that we should have instituted a labor committee.
Well, if there are additional committees that you feel are left off, just include that in your submission and Director Addy and I can take a look at all that.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, another roll call vote. Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Hi.
Director Schobert?
Yes.
Director Lotiger?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Uh, Director Saether?
Yeah.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. All right, at this time, I will, we will adjourn the organizational meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Rock Ridge School Board. At this time, I would consider additions or deletions to the agenda.
I would like to add to the agenda, need to designate responsible authority, which is usually the superintendent. And that's, that's also like the Iowa kind of representative moving to a point. That would just be right.
I, I, you kind of cut out there, Director Sorkin. What were you looking to add?
Um, design, appointing or designating a responsible eight statutory for purposes of open meeting law and that, that practices act. for purposes of, uh, open meeting law and that, that practices act.
Noel, is that, is that something that we need to do or is that something that happens by, um, operation of law?
Uh, that is, this is Noel, uh, that is something that you will need to do. So you can do that this board meeting or with the next board meeting.
Okay, I, um.
I support the addition.
Okay, um, any further discussion on that?
Fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen, fifteen, I think that makes it, right?
Correct.
And I'm not sure, do we need a roll call voter on this too?
Probably. Uh, just before we vote, we, back before because this is such a long meeting, will, should we and could we discuss later meeting about board member topics and unfinished business? At another, another agenda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Um.
We need to roll call this. This is just for the, um, consider additions or deletions. We would just do it on the approving the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Director Saether. Um, all those in favor of adding the, um, the addition signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries and now we'll do, um, a roll call to approve the agenda. Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Lottegar?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. At this time, we will have recognition of any visitors or any public input regarding the meeting agenda, which of course is a little bit difficult on Zoom. I don't know if we've got any input on any public comments on the agenda. Doesn't look like anyone else is at the boardroom.
We do not have anyone else at the boardroom here.
Thank you.
Stacy, before we go on, um, correct, uh, could I ask you, did we skip or did we not, did I miss the signature plates six point six?
Oh, I bet I missed it.
I think I'm, I think you missed it.
I did, I totally missed it. Um, let's go back to that. Yes, thank you for, uh, reminding me. Sorry, we're gonna have to adjourn the regular meeting and go back into the organizational meeting. Um, I will entertain a motion for authorization to use the current signature plate with the signatures of the past chair, clerk and treasurer that will be used until the new signature plates are ready.
Support by Saether.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? All right, uh, Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Genalini? Was that a yes, Director Genalini?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Lottegar?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is also a yes. Thank you for reminding me that I missed that. All right, going back to the, um, regular meeting. Let's see. Um, I will look for.
We were at visitor input, I believe.
Okay, and then we figured out we didn't have any visitor input. Um, and then earlier we talked about the, um, amended, can I get a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
I will make that motion, Director Lottegar.
Support by Director Anderson. Um, Director, all those in favor, um, well, I'll do a roll call vote. Director Lottegar?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is also a yes. Um, so that brings us to agenda item thirteen, right?
Correct.
Uh, recognition and reports, so, um, one is the superintendent update.
Uh, just the members of the school board, um, first of all, can you hear me okay right now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. A couple of things to update the new school board. Um, one would be the update on the Spectrum Health building. Um, now Rock Ridge, um, owns the Spectrum Health building because, um, all of the assets that either district has now converge into one. So we have taken possession of the Spectrum Health building. The part of the building where Spectrum Health was currently using as of May two thousand twenty, um, we have turned that into the construction trailer, so to speak. So Kraus Anderson is currently setting up offices there. There is a potential spot in that building where Kraus Anderson is. Um, you were earlier talking about school board meetings. There is a potential location there. Uh, and once we get the clearance that that's a location, we could have some, um, school board meetings. I believe there's an area that might be large enough, um, to accommodate all of the board members plus all the other people who might, uh, be able there to attend. Uh, we have cleared, um, that area out. Um, E-Rats is still on the other side of the building. Um, and I'll do a very, very short update on them. Um, we did have a, um, date with the judge. Um, the judge had given us a date, July twenty-fourth. Um, Judge Friday will make a decision, one way or the other, on the eminent domain, um, case. So he did not ask for additional discovery. Um, so just so you know, there, um, we are anticipating on July twenty-fourth, the judge will make a decision on the eminent domain case. I'm gonna stop here and ask if any members of the board have any questions they want to ask about the Spectrum Health building. Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna go on to the, um, next agenda item, which is another very brief update. Um, this is on, on the citizen complaint, um, that was filed with the Office of Administrative Processes. There was a procedural meeting on Friday, um, with the attorneys. Uh, basically they set some dates up and the, um, short story is that on September thirtieth, there will be a hearing date, um, where both sides, um, present the evidence, so to speak. Um, that could get moved, but as I, we're here tonight, September thirtieth, is the official, um, hearing date that the judge has set. Um, and beyond that, I can't give any additional updates because the date on Friday, um, was not a public meeting. Um, and that was simply with the judge and the attorneys, um, talking about dates. So I just want to give the board an update, um, that, um, September thirtieth is a hearing date. Any questions that any member of the board would like to ask about that? The third update, um, would be to, I did bring this up last week. Um, this would be, we do not, we're going to have to make a decision here soon. Um, I want to update the board again because the start of the school year is not that far away. I am strongly suggesting that for the most part, we keep busing and open enrollment. There is no open enrollment anymore between the two districts. But that if kids were attending a certain school because the parents, for whatever reason, chose to attend that school, that we honor that for this upcoming school year. We will have to talk about that, um, in the upcoming year. But I think it's in our best interest to not mess with attendance boundaries right now and not mess with school buildings that kids want to attend right now. Because that's a highly emotional topic and people will need think time, processing time as parents start to think about where they want, um, to send their kids and where they can send their kids. So this is just an update for the school board, um, that this is coming up very, very quickly. We will have to be working on our school bus attendance lines. And unless the school board directs me to do otherwise, we are planning to continue the busing, just like we've always done. There might be some routes that change, uh, be if we're able to, um, shorten them. But for the most part, if the kid is attending either the Virginia or Everett Gilbert School District, even though they don't live in those boundaries, we are strongly suggesting those kids still be allowed to attend those districts and those buildings. And that is what we are planning on having for the fall. Any questions from any members of the board on that?
Well, eventually Noel, you're gonna, we will have to have the question just to let the people know that when the, when the elementaries open, that the attendance boundaries will already been changed and they will, the parents will already be notified that they will be attending when the elementary opens, that they will be attending that elementary within the new district boundary. I mean, not, not so much today, but the conversation has to start so parents can, you know, start realizing that's gonna, what's gonna have to happen for reasons.
Right, um, you're right, Bill, and what I'm suggesting is let's get through the start of the school year. Uh, as we just have a lot of systems changing at once. And then once we get through the start of the school year, um, and then we will have, then I'll be coming back to the school board and coming up with the process for us to start to talking about attendance boundaries and how all of that works. Parents have at least a year's lead time, if possible, um, if, when the attendance boundaries comes into play. But Bill, yes, you are right. Okay, those are all of my updates for the school board right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item fourteen, we have administration items. Fourteen, one is consider authorizing the superintendent to approve in-state travel requirements of employees during the school year. Can I get a motion regarding that?
Make the motion.
Move.
Motion by Director Tamaro, support by Director Addy. Any additional discussion?
Is there like a dollar amount going to be set on that? Before it has to be discussed at the board level?
Noel, can you answer that?
It's outside, it's an outside in Minnesota, Brandy.
Yeah, this one here that you're, um, authorizing is for in-state travel. And if it appears to be excessive for in-state travel, I mean, I probably want to prove it to begin with. Um, but for outstate travel, yes. Um, then we would bring all of those to you and the school board would have to approve those.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And just, uh, just to clarify too, Director Lottegar, the, um, what it notes on the agenda is the exception would be scheduled athletic activities in Northwest Wisconsin. Um, any additional discussion or questions?
Well, this is distinctly for employees.
Yes. Any additional discussion or questions?
It would there, oh, well, just quickly, would there be a, a way if say an employee really felt strongly and was denied to go somewhere to maybe appeal to the board? I, I had no, I had no idea of an example, but just kind of theoretically.
I think there's always that opportunity. I mean, if they are denied by the superintendent to, you know, they have it brought to the board level. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I will take a roll call vote. Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Lottegar?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is also a yes. Um, agenda item fourteen two is consider authorizing school board members to attend necessary in-state meetings.
The only question I have there would necessar, is there a definition of necessary? That's subjective, like a Judge McCall at, at the time? Or what? I mean, like say the school board convention, the summer one and then the January one. I don't know what, you know, the definition of necessary would be versus unnecessary.
I would think that attendance at like MSBA or any additional meetings would be a necessary meeting, but I think if, um,
In the, in the past, we've always, when we want to go to a meeting, let's say the M R E A and that, we always go through the super, get his approval. And if he says no, well, then we go. And that would be the same with, with all of these. You, you run it by the superintendent.
Well, M R E A, just like MSBA, they have, um, yearly meetings, convention. So and, uh, some of the other ones, but yeah, who decides important and necessary, not necessary. That, that was my only, uh, question clarification, Stacy. The defining of terms as far as interpretation.
I would think if it's regarding work for the school that you're serving on the school board, so if it's M R E A, MSBA, anything that is helping us to be board members, whether it's a training or participation because we're part of that committee and need to be able to stay on top of it to do our work, that would be necessary.
Yeah, well.
I'm not gonna take a yoga class and bill it to the school because it's not part, it, I don't need to bend like that for school boards. Um, I mean.
We can move on and if there's ever a, a question, we could just busy with them, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, any further discussion? I will take a roll call vote on this. Director Lottegar?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes as well. Uh, agenda item fourteen three is consider authorizing the superintendent to employ additional instructional library maintenance and clerical assistance as shall become necessary.
Can we, can we get a, you know, a little bit more background on this before we even, um, what, I, I just don't, that actually means, um.
Noel, can you clarify this a little bit better?
Yes, um, it's, uh, fairly common that when something happens, um, we might need to hire somebody short-term basis. There might be an overload someplace where we need to get through something quickly. Um, this allows, uh, me to hire someone to get through this. Now ultimately, if we're hiring anybody full-time, they all have to go to the board, um, for their approval. Um, but usually this is if something happens and we have to get through a tight spot.
Okay, so this is a temporary, not a, okay.
Right, you're not giving the superintendent unilateral power to hire anybody they want forever.
Okay, good, I understand.
I'll move.
That was Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Who, support from?
Yes.
Director Anderson, any additional discussion? Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director. Director Ladigar?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Agenda item fourteen four is consider establishing a newspaper as a legal publication for school business from July first, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. There were quotes included in the agenda from both the Hometown Focus and the Misabi Daily News. Could I get a motion regarding establishing the school's legal newspaper?
Quick motion for the Misabi Daily News.
Back in.
I have a motion from Director Tamero with support from Director Schoburg. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Director Ladigar?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Tamero?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Sather?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Agenda item fourteen five is consider a resolution authorizing a grant request to the Virginia Community Foundation for the purchase of three 3D printers in the amount of $2,741.99. Can I get a motion?
I'll move, Director Sather.
Support Director Ladigar.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Director Ladigar?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
I will be abstaining because I am on the Virginia Community Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Tamero?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Sather?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is also a yes. Agenda item fourteen?
Six.
Six. Sorry, my iPad keeps dying. Consider a grant of $750 for the Minnesota Division of the Early Childhood, Early Childhood of the Council for the Exceptional Children. I'll move with. Who moved? I'm sorry. Director Baraboo, and there was support, was it Director Reardon?
Yes.
Any discussion regarding this grant? Hearing none, I will take a roll call vote. Director Sather?
Yeah.
Director Genalini? I didn't, was that a yes? I didn't hear.
Yes.
Thank you. Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamero? Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Ladigar?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Agenda item fourteen seven is consider a license agreement between Virginia Ebleth Economic Development Authority and Rock Ridge School District 2909.
I, I would like if Noel could fill us in on exactly what, what this says.
Yep, very happy to do that, Matt. What this is, this is for, we are in the process of acquiring parcels of land for the, from the elementary site. We are discovering there are some odd bits of parcels of land that originally belonged to VITA. And so it's, and so what we are doing is in the process of acquiring those parcels, in the meantime, while we acquire them, this will allow us to use construction on these properties. And so this license agreement will allow Carl Anderson to start construction on one of the parcels that is owned by VITA. So that in the short run is what that is for, Matt.
Thank you. With, with, with that, I would move this.
Thank you, Director Schoburg. Is there support?
Reardon, support.
Support by Director Reardon. Any additional discussion?
Noel, I have a question. Are you speaking of that little strip of land that VITA owns between? That little strip or?
Um, they're, they're all little strips. But yeah, this particular little strip is the one between the Spectrum Health Building and where the site B, A would be that originally the Ebleth School Board bought. So it would be between the football stadium where the new football stadium will be and where the Spectrum Health Building is. That's where this parcel is located.
Okay, and the Exhibit A, the description, it's just a small piece then, huh?
Yes, it is not a big chunk of land.
Okay, it doesn't include the 1404 building?
It does not include the 1404 building.
Any other discussion? Hey, Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Ladigar?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Tamero? Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Sather?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes as well. Agenda item fourteen five is consider a resolution, or no, sorry about that. Fourteen eight is consider the graduation requirements for Rock Ridge grades nine through 12. I would entertain a motion.
Make the motion.
Motion by Director Tamero, is there support?
By Director Sather?
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, I will do a roll call vote on this. Director Sather?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamero? Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Ladigar?
Yes.
And Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Sunquist is a yes as well. Agenda item fourteen nine is consider furniture furnishings and related equipment proposal. There on the agenda was a work authorization form, a notice to proceed, and another work authorization form. Those were distinguished by work authorization forms one and two.
And members of the school board, I should probably note that I believe we do have the architects online. So if any board member would like to ask any questions of the architects in regards to the FFE proposal, they may certainly do that now.
Did we, did, did we skip the Rock Ridge transition graduation requirements? 14.8?
No, I don't believe we did.
We just voted on.
Yeah, that was us. That was the last thing voted on.
Yeah.
Got it.
Thanks for double checking, though. It's, it's a lengthy agenda, so.
I, I, I would ask a question as, as far as the FFE. Now, this would be working in conjunction with, with Jeff Carey, who that FFE, I believe, was, ended up as part of his job description.
Yes, Matt, Jeff Carey would be involved with the architects on the FFE proposal.
I had that, I had that question too, Matt, because in here, signing off on things on, on page forty and feedback and, I don't know, equipment rep? Question mark if Jeff was that.
The only thing I would add for members of the board is you consider this proposal is that it, the furniture part of it, it is a big deal. We have to get the furniture part right. When talking to, and I'm going to use the Alexandria example, just because many of you saw Alexandria. Alexandria had a situation where they did not agree with the architect's FFE original proposal. They thought they could save money and so they did part of it on their own. They, several years later, they regretted their decision because they bought lower quality furniture that was cheaper and it just didn't hold up. So in this case, what's critical is that we have to have furniture that's going to stand up over a long, long period of time. So what this means is you aren't paying more for the furniture because it has to last 20, 30 years. Furniture that lasts one or two or three years. So in talking to the outgoing, she's retired now superintendent, when she gave us any advice, she said, if you give the board any advice, don't cut back on FFE because you're going to pay for it in the long run.
And I'm, I'm all for buying quality stuff. I just hope that functionality is the primary objective. Continues to be.
And that's a really good question. And so what we will do is, because it does have to be functional, we will set up rooms that potential furniture. And then kids will come in and teachers can come in and members of the school board, you can certainly come in too and try it out. And say you like this, you don't like this. So we want to have user experiences so that it works for our kids and our students and the adults and also board members. So as this gets set up, I'll almost certainly be inviting you to come on in and try it out and you can tell us what you think too.
Sounds good. Any other questions regarding the FFE or the, the FFE?
These two, now one is $198,000, one is $148,000. Do we have any handle on, it's those two costs plus reimbursable expenses? No, originally, when something was signed, there was a chart and there was, there were figures that tend to beyond things. And I understand that that rate automatically went up, of, of those items automatically went up like right away next year. So is that something that could start costing a lot of money, these reimbursable expenses?
Hey, Todd or Judy, are either one of you on, or John, who can help answer that question for our board members?
Noel, do you know what I'm referring to? One of the original documents and one of the back pages that had a whole list of extra charges and expenses?
Yeah, yeah, if I, if I know what you're talking about. It was the one that also had the hourly rate. Is that the chart you're talking about? Yep, I know what you're talking about, Polly.
And those went up a certain percentage from what was on that list or amount right away, so. I just wonder how much that could add up to a lot of extra.
Noel, this is Todd from Cunningham Group and I've got several folks here with me from DSGW and the elementary and high school teams as well that might be able to chime in on this and add to this answer. But Polly, I think if I understand your, your question correctly, you know, the reimbursables are really asked through costs, mileage. We have to come up and do site visits, if there's hotel rooms, those types of things. We wouldn't be adding services or doing any kind of escalators or increases to our fees. The proposals are for, for a fixed fee for the services listed. And if I, did I, did I capture your question correctly, Director Sorkin?
Kind of, but I didn't, I didn't have a chance to pull it up. I don't even know where I would find it. I just remember this whole page of extra, extra expenses and per hour things, just like Noel said. And I just, I'm just concerned that that turned out to be a lot additional from the budget. And then, you know, all of these, all of these workers and all of, all of these buildings. Only number one and number two. We've had other ones before, before it came, it came for the joint and stuff, so. Just, just a concern about added expenses. And how, how, how deep and major they may be in the end as a total.
Saying this, Noel, for members of the board, I can probably help answer that question. These services that you're looking at, these were involved in the original master budget. So these are not additional charges. These are not additional bills that they're asking for. These are all part of the original. When the $178.5 million was originally broken out, this was a line item and this was originally included. So what you're looking at tonight, these are not additions to the original budget.
I do understand that, Noel, and that is on the second paragraph of both of the documents, number one and number two. So I do understand that, but the reimbursable expenses are above and beyond those numbers. Right?
And I would say this for members of the board. Because of COVID, you're actually saving money on reimbursables because they are not coming up here. We're doing a lot more Zoom meetings, but at some point, they will need to come up here. And that's where the reimbursable category comes into play. Polly, yes, you are right. We do keep a watch on that because we certainly do not want anybody on the taxpayer's dime, you know, putting in excessive reimbursables.
Well, I didn't mean that they be excessive. I just meant that as a total, they add up. And I'm sure those will be line items on, on the financials.
Yep, you will see them.
Okay, thanks.
They'll be included in any applications for payment. You'll get full backup and documentation of them.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Approve.
Motion by Director Baraboo, do I have support?
Support by Director Sather.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I will take a roll call vote. Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Ladigar?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Tamero?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Sather?
Yeah.
And Director Sunquist is also a yes. Agenda item fourteen ten is Rock Ridge Options to Appoint or Appoint Select Fundraising Director. And Noel, maybe you want to cover this a little bit before we go to a motion on it?
Yep, this is, we talked about this the last time. This is up to you as far as what you want to do. If we do go down the fundraising road, which I think we will need to do, I think last time I gave you, and I know there's a number of options. I'm just trying to simplify a thing. Your first option is to simply do nothing. And then we would figure out a way to fundraise. Your second option would be to convert the assistant principals that you've already approved into more student supervisors and then hire a human resources who could do some of the things that the assistant principals were going to do. That person then, we would give also fundraising, major fundraising duties. And this would be a position in my mind, we would post for and see who applies and then hire the best talent. So that could be, I don't know, could be internal or external. Your third option would be to just simply keep everything that is and just hire a fundraising director completely independent of anything else. Your fourth option is we simply assign the fundraising option to one of our principals or admin and we have them. or admin and we have them work on it. The only thing I would, so it's up to the board as far as what you would like to do on this. And I'm going to repeat what I said last meeting. I would be disappointed if this person did not raise at least a million dollars because I think these are worthy projects we're looking at. There are certain things that the range desperately needs. You have a long loyal fan base out there and they, some of them don't even live here, who may be willing to do certain things. But I think it's time to start the fundraising and get it going. So now I'm asking the school board for direction as far as what you would like to do.
And Noel, did administration have a recommendation as to which, which plan the board should strongly consider above the others?
If you ask the principals, they're all going to say, give me the assistant principals. And they're going to go with option three probably or option one. If you're asking me, I think there's a lot of benefit to going to option two, partly because yes, it does save you the most amount of money in the long run. It's doable and I think we can accomplish everything we need to do under that one. So if you're asking me, I lean towards option two.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Noel?
I guess I just, I, you know, I've gotten a few phone calls about this and I want to just have a discussion. I've gotten a few phone calls basically about, again, remember I've, I've said numerous times, I don't, I don't know if it's necessary to have assistant principals in the elementary schools. I get it for in the high school, but I don't know about assistant principals for the elementary school. And as far as the fundraising director goes, I've been hearing some things, so I'm hoping that Noel can clarify, but I've been hearing some things about some extensive travel for this individual potentially going to other states. And there's also concern that, concern that somebody's already lined up for the position. I guess I just, I have some difficulty because we'll be talking about cuts and reductions and, and the hiring of teachers and stuff down the line. But I'm guessing that that position will be a lot of money. And I know Evelyn Gilbert, in the past, a lot of the studies have been saying that, you know, we're top heavy and we're, we're paying a lot of money up at the top and I want to ensure that that's not happening. I, I like the wall in Alexandria and I'd like us to have that too. But how can we go about that in the cheapest and best option for the school district? And I want to be, you know, respectful of the dollar amount we went out to the public asking for. You know, I just, again, I've gotten a number of phone calls and I have some concerns about the position.
Sure. Go ahead. I agree with you. I don't think it's very, I think it's another administrative job. We don't know the cost, even the $150,000 that is estimated is, is quite, quite a chunk of money. I'm against this. I call a money beggar. All right, but that's.
I, my, my feeling is it's absolutely critical that we get the right person in this because I believe that, number one, I think, as I said at the last meeting, that Noel's estimate of raising a million dollars is, is very, very conservative if this is done the right way with the right person. And I see this as an opportunity to put some of those things back in the budget that may have been cut due to budgetary constraints. And, and I think if, if we do this the proper way, it'll repay for itself many times over.
I tend to agree with you, Director Schober. And I am also a little bit worried about if we choose to have someone in the fundraising position, which I also think is pretty important. I don't feel comfortable putting it on top of a current principal to have on their plate in addition to all the other things they're going to be having to go after with the merging, with the new district. So I guess, I think it's important.
No job description, first of all, of a person, if it, if it goes, no job description, no expectations, no.
Well, I think the first thing we have to decide is how we're going to do it. And then I would think those details would come in after that. And then I also think, if I, if I recall correctly, Noel, the discussion was that this wasn't going to be a permanent position, but that it would be maybe a couple of years at best?
Yes, on the fundraising part, I don't see the fundraising part lasting longer than probably about two, maybe, maybe two and a half, but probably about two.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to go with option two for the fundraising director.
The part.
Any additional discussion?
Yes.
I'm going to, I can't, I can't hear Director Genalini and I can't see him. Can?
Wish you're close.
I'm as close as I can get. Well, he's wondering about grant writers.
You have a grant writer that's being paid a percentage of the grants that you get. This is not going to be a permanent position that's going to cost you the district money. Why couldn't you fill this position on that type of thing? You give a percentage of the money that he can generate.
That's a good point, yeah.
But I don't, I don't necessarily know, or I don't know what kind of grants that, that we would be targeting or that a lot of this stuff could fit in versus fundraising. I don't, I mean, I'm fairly familiar with various grants and I don't know if that's exactly what we would be targeting. And I think we would see a significant less amount of money that we're able to pull in. And grants are very specific and versus fundraising where we can target different areas, we can use the money a little bit differently than grants. It seems. I don't see them being similar in any such way. If we have someone writing grants, great. We just won today that, you know, that Michelle had written, but I don't think that it's a similar thing.
Kelly, it sounds like it's more of an analogy to a grant writer, a fundraiser mission basis, like a grant, more you make, that's very incentivizing versus somebody who's going to get $150,000 no matter what, you know? Are there goals for each and I, you know, I.
I, I, I see this position working more with individuals who have the opportunity to give back to their community and to work with those individuals to make them comfortable and, and as more private as, as opposed to writing grants per se.
Again, Matt, I guess I think it's analogy, a fundraiser like a grant, like how they're, they get a percentage of what they raise or what grants they get. That's, that's the point, not a grant.
I think it's different though, when people look at someone receiving compensation for, so if I'm going to give 10,000 to the school and I know that the person who found me gets 1,000 of that, it sits different for me versus me giving the school 10,000.
Right.
Or maybe someone will donate a million and then it's even more, yeah, the.
Well, then that person, whatever.
I mean, I, I definitely, I definitely too think that there's money out there for donations. I guess I just, I don't know if we specifically need to hire somebody and pay them, you know, $100,000 or whatever to go out there and, and get those donations. I mean, I think there's many different ways and opportunities to get those, you know, those donations.
I agree and nobody, nobody answered Brandy's question about extensive travel on that cost. That would be above and beyond the salary?
Um, I will, yes, Noel, I will be happy to answer that. When you're dealing with fundraisers and people who have money, it's a different ballgame. So the question is, if we have somebody who lives in Georgia and we believe that they may be willing to give half a million dollars, would we put somebody on an airplane to talk to them? That is what many, many major people who do this for a living, they do. So that could happen. I can see that happen. Now, this goes to out of state travel again. So the school board has to approve all out of state travel. So if that was going to happen, this, this would come back to the school board. But you're dealing with big donors who are seriously thinking about money. It is not unusual for someone to contact them and to do that. So in answer to that question, if you really want to do this well and you really want to try and get 100,000, half a million dollar increments, yes, you're going to have to do some things to bring the money in. That's what you're going to have to do. If you don't want to do that, that's fine. You just need to understand you are limiting opportunities to really get some significant donations.
Is there something in, is there something in particular? I mean, there's, I know it can go towards curriculum and, and could go towards all kinds of different things, the donor wall and whatever, but is there certain things that you have earmarked already for the, the funds?
Excellent question. We did meet as an admin group. This is Evelyn Gilbert and Virginia and we did make a tentative list of potential fundraising topics. If the board does move in the direction of a fundraiser, this would be, that person would also get involved on the ground floor of that as far as, and you as a board would also see the list because you want to have a very specific list. You just don't want to approach donors and say, hey, we got a really bunch of nifty stuff. Are you interested in donating money? They're more likely, you have to have specific targeted things and you have to have dollar amounts. So yes, Brandy, the board would see the list and you would also participate in thinking about potential topics that should be on the list. Some of the most common ones are scoreboards, are names on football stadiums. If you were in Alexandria, you also noted that in the academic areas, some of the classrooms had specific names on them. Those were also from donors. So athletic one is an area that a lot of people think of first, but there's a lot of academic areas that also would be potential for fundraising.
I, so my one last comment that I want to make on this, I do think it's, I agree with option two. I think it is important to target this area and the out of state travel still has to come before the board. So I'm fine with that on approving as needed. And the sooner we do this, the better, especially when we know that our, the designs continue to be worked on, the buildings are, are going to start taking shape and some of these fundraising money, it could, could potentially want to target, you know, our arts or other areas within the building that could very well change something drastic. So I would like to maybe get this started sooner.
Some of the things that we're already talking about is that we're being forced it, number one, but it could be, it could be internal, it could be external, it could be an internal person or an external person. That's, that should alleviate some of the wailing and national heat. But the other thing is too, this, like Matt has said, we need this position, we need to pay this position if we want to get money. Like, I think it's in a realm of a teacher or para or secretaries to go up and say, do you think you can spare $100,000? You know, I think we should invest in some money to make some money. That's just me.
I agree with, I agree with Murray on that because there has to be many years' worth of alumni from all the schools involved in joining together here with the new school that have done very well for themselves and maybe, maybe all over the country. And if you get a person whose job it is to reach out, look at what Harvard and some of these universities have pulled in just from their alumni. I think, I think somebody knows what they're doing and somebody who has the time to invest in it would be the way to go.
Noel, do you, who would be involved in like the interviewing?
Um, well, I would really like for at least one board member from the old Evelyn Gilbert School District and the old Virginia School District to be there. I would probably be there. We'd probably have a couple of business, parent, community people because this person is, has to be able to sell themselves and sell the story and they have to be personable friendly. So I'm looking at this as this would mostly probably be non educators, non teachers on this interview committee.
Okay, and how long do you think that this, this position would be for? What's that, if you got an estimate on how long?
Um, the fundraising part of it would be for two years. It could go longer than that depending where we are with donations. But on that end of it, that's what I'm thinking right now, two to two and a half years. And I, and when I'm saying that, if you go with option two, I want you to understand that we are not giving the principals assistant principals. In order to do that, we have to have, once you get to a building of 500, it does become tough for one person to do that. So we do have to put somebody in place to help the principals out, which is where the HR director would come into play. So under option two, this person would then stay on as the HR director. And again, at the board's pleasure, if the board doesn't like this person or like this, one, this person is not on a union contract and you could let them go.
Okay, and then it's not in the budget because we hadn't talked about it before, correct? So how are, how are we funding it?
Um, for right now, you would, you would fund as of this minute, and I know you're going to talk about budget in a, in a little bit, but I believe that this person is going to bring in so much money that things that you would normally have spent money on out of your general budget, this person is probably going to be one of our few positions we have that will pay for themselves. I am honestly, Brandy, not worried about this, paying for this position because I know this person is going to raise enough money that will save you money from your general supplies. And in the short term, on the Virginia side equation, Virginia is coming into this meeting with 400,000 in reserves over for this coming school year. I know the Evelyn Gilbert School Board is about 400,000 deficit coming into it. So in the short term, on the Virginia side equation, the money is there.
Okay, and isn't Deb Weary doing human resource? Isn't she the human resource director?
Yeah, yeah, she is the Evelyn Gilbert clerical. She still would continue to be in human resources, so that would not change. The sole intention of putting, creating the HR person is to, you don't, I'm clear on this, you do not need an HR person if you have assistant principals in all the buildings. If you don't have assistant principals in all the buildings, like the elementary schools, then you have justification for an HR person in addition to Deb.
Again, I, I, again, I just, I, you know, I definitely see money out there, being out there from alumni and from large businesses. I just don't know if it's, if we necessarily need to spend that, you know, large amount of money on somebody in particular to do that position when there's so many other options for fundraisings nowadays. That's all. That's all. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Director Lottegar. Any additional discussion?
If we went with option two, you were changing assistant principals and deans to student assistant supervisors. What duties would that, what different duties would that be? Would we get less of the student assistant supervisor because you dropped down the cost to $60,000? And I don't see where you have any for principal slash dean, but you have 150,000 for assistant principal.
And the reason why I put that under option two, Polly, is because you can't afford everything. At some point, you just simply can't afford everything, even though a lot of these things are nice to have. Yes, student supervisor, many districts use them. There's different names. They've called for them. They are able to help on student discipline. They do help on management of behavior. They do process the easier discipline referrals. But if it is going to involve some kind of suspension, then the principal has to do it. One of the biggest differences is that a student supervisor cannot do teacher evaluations and supervisions. That has to be done by an administrator. So the principals can, they don't like student supervisors because they love somebody who can do everything. When I'm gone, they can do everything. A student supervisor can't do that. But I've been in buildings where the student supervisor has been very, very effective. They can go in the cafeteria. They can be on the playground. You probably hear your principals complaining about, I can't be everywhere. And so in my mind, the student supervisor would be somebody who would be there when kids enter the building and they would be there when the kids leave the building. And then they're available for everything that happens between the start and end of the school day.
So how is that different than a dean of students? We have a dean of students. You do not. You have assistant principals and we do not, or we did not.
They are very, very similar, except student supervisors are less expensive. If you would like to go to a dean in the long run, you certainly could. It's just going to cost you a little bit more money.
And deans cannot evaluate and deans cannot supervise either. I'm just, I don't know how we're splitting hairs between the duties of a dean and a student assistant supervisor for a savings of $90,000.
A lot of it is just simply cost. If you get the right person, it doesn't matter whether they're a dean or a student supervisor. You're just going to end up paying a little bit more for the deans over the long run.
The other thing, a dean of students, you do not, depends on your contract. They do not, in some cases, need a teaching license and in others, they do. And what else?
Most deans are teachers.
But they don't have to be.
They don't have to be, but it's very rare to have deans in a public school system who are not teachers.
And a student supervisor absolutely would not have to be a teacher.
Correct.
All right, is there any additional discussion? I think we've covered this topic fairly extensively.
One more thing with that 150,000, if this person would become an employee of the district and that would include benefits, salary only, or salary and benefits in our groups?
Polly, that is excellent question. I put everything in there. So there's no hidden money or anything like that. That is a cost. If you hire someone on an admin level, that's about what they cost with benefits a year.
All right, we have a motion out there. We have support. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Director Saether. Oh, you're muted.
Yeah, it took me a bit to get it. Yes.
Director Genalini. I'll come back to him. Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
No.
Director Lottegar?
No.
Director Addy?
No.
Director Barabu?
Yes.
Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Tamero?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Whoa. He said no.
Right. Director Saether? Oh, I already did you, sorry. Getting late. And Director Sunquist is a yes. So there were four noes, nine yeses, the motion passes.
Wasn't it five noes?
No. No. Only 12.
Director Yohan is gone, so it was four noes and...
Oh, eight yeses. Thank you. And one absent. Okay, so now we're going to go to the amended agenda. So we moved 12, 9 to 14, 1, which would be the hiring of Elizabeth Neme. And I don't know if it makes sense to kind of lump these together. If we want to talk about them all together, it was, we moved 12, 9 to 14, 11, 12, 10 to 14, 12. Or I think it was, it's easier maybe for me to do it like this. 14, or 12, 9, 12, 10, 12, 11, 12, 12. We're switched to 14, 11, 14, 12, 14, 13, and 14, 14. Am I remembering correctly?
Yes, you are.
And those were regarding the hiring of Elizabeth Neme, Peyton Worley, Lindsay Engel, and Matthew Stevens.
We had one, we had one before that. We had 12. We had one before that about the, yeah. That was before the teacher hirings. Emre, membership?
Okay.
No, I gave you the option to talk about it on the consent agenda with some other items.
Yeah, I didn't have that one written down. I just had the teacher hires.
That was the other thing, Greg. That was the other thing I spoke about. I had a quick question about the Emre one is the one I wanted to be. So you missed, and I thought you understood me, so I thought that was on. It's very quick.
Go ahead, Polly. You can go ahead and ask the question.
I can't even find it. Well, anyhow, on the handout, we have an option of a one-year membership or a two-year membership. And it was recommended in a number, the cost in there is for a one-year membership. I'm just suggesting for, that was a 10% discount for this coming year, 2021. If we went for the two-year, it would be another 15% there to be an extra $400 savings. And we are going to members, just like MSBA, year after year after year. We may as well go for the two-year membership for 40 to 50 instead of 5,000 next year. Next year, but 5,000 in total. And that, my suggestion was just membership. That's all.
And that's 12.8?
Yes. It was 12.8. Yep.
We say 10% this year and if we, two years, we say 10% next year. Just a little simple. So I would make that.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
I made that motion.
Would you repeat that, please? It was broken up and I didn't make sense of it.
Yeah, Gal, we are going to be, it's proposed to be members again of Emre. And so the agenda item said for the 2021 school year, the sum of $2,250. That's a 10% reduction for this. We take the two-year membership, we would get a 15% discount on the second year of almost $400. And if we're going to belong to them anyway, instead of paying the full price to pay 15% discounted price. And it's just a little mathematical thing. That's all.
Madam Chair, has anybody seconded that?
No.
I will second that.
Any additional discussion?
Thank you, Tim.
Let's do a roll call vote on this. Director Mannanen?
Aye.
Director Reardon?
Aye.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Lottegar?
Yes.
Director Addy? That was a yes, even though you're on mute, I think. Thumbs up. Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Barabu?
Yes.
Director Genalini? That was a no. Can someone confirm? I couldn't catch it.
Said no.
Okay. Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamero?
Yes.
Director Schoberg?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. So that is one no and 11 yeses. Motion carries. And then I'm just going to put these next four together. And like I noted, it was previously 9, 12, 10, 12, 11, and 12, 12, which was regarding the hiring of four teachers. And it looks like they were all in the district formerly known as 706. And I think there was, well, I'll just let... Noel, do you want to speak to how the process was carried out?
Yes, this is in March, the Virginia Public School District talked about the budget. We started in committees. This then went to the total Virginia School Board. In May, the Virginia School Board approved the budget. And then, now a couple of these are simple salary adjustments because as teachers go up the ladder, they make more. And so the two hires, the hires that we have, the new hires, these are to replace retired teachers in the Virginia system. And these were, the positions were approved with the Virginia budget. And so we just happened to hire them and get through the interviewing process at this date and time. And so the Rock Ridge School Board is now the new school board. So now we're taking them to this new school board here because these were prior approvals. And I know it's a different situation now under the Virginia school budget. So that's kind of the background for these individuals.
Okay, the first one, Noel, 12.9. It says you already hired her, previously hired, and now you're just increasing her another 10 credits. So if she was hired on May 11th, I don't understand about rehiring her again today.
Well, and this is a quirk of how Virginia has done this for years. And you can decide how you want to do it with the new school board. But with teachers who go up in credits, they come to the board for approval. And this is just how the Virginia Board has done it for so long.
Well, Evelyn Gilbert, go ahead.
Director Sorkin, something seems to have happened with your audio and video, at least on my computer.
Yeah, she's frozen.
Director Sorkin, I think your internet was kind of funky. We just missed everything you said.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yeah.
I think Noel just said that in Virginia, you do it that way. But can we just add the credits? She's already hired and then you just increase the pay for the credits, the BA plus 10, the plus 10 credits. And I was asking why it says to hire her for that. Because it's like, if you already have a starting date, does this affect your seniority on the seniority list? I don't know how you can hire her and then now you're going to hire her again just because she's adding credits.
So then what I would recommend to this board is that to approve her increased pay for her additional credits and take the word "hire" out.
And that's how I thought it was, what it was meant to be, but...
Polly, it's all a contract procedural thing. They have to submit them prior to June 1st. Actually, they have to do it in May, and that's why we've always done it this way, so.
And we have prior approval too, and they have to submit, but... And then, well, along those lines about the seniority, how, when people are hired on the same day, how are we to determine their seniority? I know how Evelyn Gilbert does it. I'm not sure how Virginia used to do it, but now we're a new district. How are we going to do it?
And I guess maybe, I don't know if Noel can answer that quickly, but that maybe is a discussion for either one of the committees or a later time. I certainly know that we've got still a lot to go through. We've been here for two hours already. And I don't know that necessarily pertains to the hiring of any of these individuals at this time.
Well, it kind of does because that first one is just a lane, right? You know, you've got steps and lanes. And then in the future, we're having people all hired on the same day. Now, these four...
Right, but I think that that will be a matter when we're merging contracts because I know that language is at least in the Virginia contract and not necessarily something that the board needs to determine tonight. Okay, and the other question?
Polly, it's spelled out in our contract. All the first one on the agenda has seniority over the second one. The third one on the same agenda. So as Stacy has stated, when we start to combine our teachers' contracts, whatever verbiage that they come up with is what we will have to live with.
Okay, so then these teachers are being hired under the previous Virginia contract until a new combined contract is developed, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And these are all, all positions going into an existing Virginia building, you know, previous Virginia district building? That's why they would fall under the Virginia contract right now?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
I'll move approval of these hires and lane changers.
Do I have a second? Who is the support from? Thank you. Any additional discussion?
I just think, I just want to say, you know, I'm assuming going forward, we're going to be making sure that we're, you know, making sure that people in the old Virginia School District and the old Evelyn Gilbert School District are being looked at to fill positions before we're looking outside to hire.
I would assume that since we're now one district, that we would do any postings internally and that would encompass the entire district.
Okay.
Any additional discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Director Barabu and support by Director Genalini. I will now take a roll call vote. Director?
Tamero.
Tamero?
Yes. He's going. Yes.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Genalini? Director Schoberg?
Aye, aye.
Director Reardon?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Lottegar?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. It looks like Director Schoberg is temporarily unavailable and Director Yohan is unavailable. So that would be...
Yes.
Oh, Director Barabu, thank you. Someone looks, I think someone switched something and all my screens changed. So we have 11 yeses and two who did not vote. Motion passes. All right, so now we are on agenda item 15, which is finance.
Hey, Stacy, excuse me, Stacy, who voted no?
No one.
I said no one.
Oh, so, okay.
I said just two that were unavailable because Director Schoberg and Director Yohan were not available.
Okay, all right.
Director Schoberg, Director Schoberg did vote. He said yes.
Okay, thank you. Then it would be 12 yes, one unavailable, 0 no. Going to finance, I would...
Excuse me, Chair Sunquist?
Yes.
We actually had 14.15 that was added for the designated responsible...
That's right. Thank you for reminding me. That was right. Director Sorkin made that addition that we need to designate a responsible authority. And I believe that her suggestion had been to designate the superintendent as the designated, as a responsible authority.
And he has to be named by name, not just his position.
Right, I'm just, I'm looking, are you making that motion?
Make the motion, yes.
Motion to designate Noel Schmidt as the responsible authority?
Yes. Support?
Support by Barabu. Any additional discussion? I will take a roll call vote. Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Sorkin? Director Lotigar?
Yep.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes, motion passes. And thank you, Director Saether, for catching that for me. Agenda item fifteen is finance. Uh, consider a resolution directing the administration to make recommendations for reductions in programs and positions and reasons therefore. And this is um in accordance with state statutes. So move by Director Tamaro, support?
Support, Riordan.
Thank you. Any discussion?
And this is just to make recommendations.
Right, that would have to come, still have to come before the board for approval.
One clarification and typo, one clarification, Noel, this would not include teachers, because we have to give them notice before July first, right? Are these all other employees that you're talking about here in programs?
Uh, these would be all others, but these also would include non-tenure teachers. Um, for whatever reason, we would not be recommending the aspect. But the board ultimately still has to make the decisions in all of these situations.
Right, so it's not for tenure teachers.
That's correct.
And then just the typo, this resolution says District seven oh six, right about in the middle.
Well, say I need to go back, Polly. Uh, this would involve teachers also. If we have, if we have non-tenure teachers that we're making recommendations, or this could potentially include, I don't see this happening in our situation, but if we need to make reductions, it could theoretically involve teachers also. So I don't want to mislead the board on this one.
No, you said non-tenure teachers, right?
Right, but sometimes we're not in this situation, but if you get into a real tight budget, it is superintendent sometimes do make recommendations that can involve tenured teachers. I don't see that situation happening, but theoretically, there's always that possibility. So I need to say that.
Absolutely. So this is for the twenty twenty-one school year, but have to notify them before July first of twenty.
You are correct.
That's, that was my clarification.
And then absolutely, when the resolution is signed, it would reflect the correct school district. Any other discussion? Uh, roll call vote. Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Lotigar?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes, motion passes. Agenda item fifteen two is to consider payroll dates for the twenty twenty-one fiscal year. Spencer, do you want to run through that?
Yep, this one, uh, we talked about it last week. Just the the dates on between the two staffs was different. Um, in Virginia, they were paid on the sixteenth and last day of the month. In Evelyn Gilbert, they were paid on the fifteenth and the last day of the month. We are just asking to pay all on the fifteenth and the last day of the month. We did talk to um the VEA um represents representatives. Um, it was stated in their contract that they get paid on the sixteen, and they are good with an MOU to be paid on the fifteen.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Baraboo's, do I get, have any, that was support by?
Saether.
Thank you. Um, any additional discussion? Director Genalini?
Yes, he said yes.
Thank you. Director Anderson? Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Lotigar?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Schoberg?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is also a yes, motion passes. Agenda item fifteen three, consider using teachers on call to provide teacher and paraprofessional substitutes. Did I get a motion regarding that?
Make the motion.
I'll move.
Motion by Director Tamaro, support by Director Addy. Any discussion? Hearing none. Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Lotigar?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Tamaro?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
And Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Sunquist is also a yes, motion passes. Agenda item fifteen four, consider twenty twenty-one meal prices.
This, I can take this one.
Thank you.
Um, this is another one where we had differences between the two districts, and um we tried to look at what the meal prices were in each and make them so that we would receive about the same revenue going into next year, and changing those prices so that they are the same regardless of where it's doing goes to school. Um, so this is where it's at. I will say that um the National Food Service, they often will come out and give a minimum dollar amount. Um, so if that changes over the summer, we would then bring this prior to the school if we have anything that's under what their minimum requirements are. But this is where we think they will be right now.
Thank you. And did everyone have a chance to review that before tonight's meeting? So can I get a motion regarding the Rock Ridge meal prices for twenty twenty-one?
So move.
Support. Director Lotiger.
No, uh, motion by Director Anderson, support by Director Lotiger. Director Anderson? Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Genalini?
Are we, are we not having any discussion on this, uh, Director Sunquist?
Do you, is there any discussion? I'm sorry, I thought I, I missed it. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Are we going, are we going to move forward in the future? I mean, if you look at these prices, I mean, why was Gilbert being charged more than? I mean, when you get the same food service from them, the same company?
A lot of these are, a lot of these are based off of how many people eat um at the meals. Or eat, well, so that's why the prices were reflective, so that that the revenue coming in meet meets the expenses that are going out. So um that's why there's difference.
So I mean, if. So if we got more kids now combined with between the districts, the price would be cheaper than with the newer Rock Ridge district, it should be even cheaper, because now there's power in, you know, in in in, you know, there's more, there's, there's more meals being sold as one district, so you think they would be able to adjust their prices and make them cheaper?
Yeah. These prices are determined by you, so if you would like to make them cheaper, like I said, a lot of these are at the minimum that the federal government allows. Um, they don't just let you um go all the way down to five cents if you wanted to. They do have minimum.
No, 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 I'm, but doesn't INAC control the price to some degree?
Um, Bill, this is what we charge people.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, but Matt, we contract with INAC. I think both of us have INAC. We contract with them. Usually it's been for you, three, three per year of their, their fees or their, what they get. I think there is a relationship, if that's what you're talking about, Bill, with uh INAC, the service provider.
Right.
And I wondered, ship was to meal prices and then what, what we are giving them.
Okay.
I'm on your trip, I guess, here.
Alright, that's all I got to say. I just, maybe moving forward with the new district and the new school. When the new high school opens, I'm gonna have a culinary part of it, that we, we can cut ties with INAC in the future.
I certainly think that we'll have that option to determine who we want as a meal provider, and what kind of meals we'll want in our schools.
And until then, we're in negotiation, negotiating with them, so.
Okay.
Any additional discussion?
I'm good.
Hearing none, I'll, I'll restart with the roll call. Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamaro? Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Lotigar? That was a yes, you were on mute. Um, Director Sorkin? Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Schoberg?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes as well, motion passes. Agenda item fifteen six is consider property liability in workers' comp insurance. Um, Spencer, can you run us through this one?
We got the budget.
Fifteen, aye.
Uh, my eyes must be getting tired. Fifteen five is consider the twenty twenty twenty-one Rock Ridge proposed budget. And I bet Spencer wants to take this one too.
Yes, I can. So this is um the proposed budget that actually was at the working session um a week ago on the twenty-second. So that's what's in the packet at this point. Um, I think we talked about it a lot there. I don't know if you want me to to cover anything more tonight, or if you have any other questions.
I, this is Director Saether, uh, if I could, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
Um, I don't think this would necessarily be accurate, because I believe the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one budget for Evelyn Gilbert was based on the assumption that we were taking the recommendations by administration, which did not happen. So would that not then skew the Rock Ridge budget? Where this wouldn't necessarily ac- accurately reflect where we're sitting at today?
Yes, that would be correct.
So what does that mean, Spencer? I know that we had talked kind of last week about uh the recommendations for um a balanced budget.
Those, those that I, that they did not um make from those recommendations equates to about three hundred and eighty thousand.
What, three hundred and eighty thousand, which way?
Um, into the red.
We, we, we approved the um we approved Adsys and a section to be cut in third grade and sixth grade. And we also, um, oh no, you're right.
It passed.
It didn't pass, it was tabled, all of that was tabled. You're right. So I, I guess I don't even know if this would be the right time, but um I would suggest the Budget Committee is one of the committees that, that, that they um meet very soon to be able to review everything and try to um balance our budget appropriately and look at some of the recommendations that administration has made.
Randy, it's one pot of money right now. Everything over in its one pot.
Right.
So now, Spencer, is there a date that we have to have a balanced budget approved?
We need to have a a budget approved tonight. Um, the date that the state sets is June thirtieth to have a budget, um but because we're brand new today, today is the date.
So are you suggesting that we approve it, uh approve the ballot, approve the budget, um even with the uh even though it's not balanced?
Um, the, the overall Rock Ridge would be.
Yes.
Um, but I think we, I think we should meet. I think that's an excellent idea. Um, so I think if you approve it, you should approve it without the reductions that were made. So that we can have something approved today, and then we can look at it and make a revised budget if needed.
Miss Chair?
Yes.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the, the budget as presented, and then the full board can be presented with which changes uh were made so that we can then um talk about that, or the, the Budget Committee can talk about that in the future.
So I've got a motion from Director Riordan. Do I have support?
Support.
Any additional discussion?
I have a question of you, Spencer, um on page seventy-one. Okay, so the combined Rock Ridge fund balance is two million four nineteen nine ninety-one. In that same page, uh, I had clarified with, with Jeff at our last meeting that uh the committed to construction, EG Elementary, is million. That was from our general fund. And then the, where, where is the two point five million committed for the seven twelve academy on the Virginia side? Where's that from?
Um, where was that from?
Yes.
Um, when the board committed the three million or the two point five million from Virginia, they took it from um about three different spots. They took it from some capital dollars, they took it from some um unassigned. And then they had one other committed that they recommitted to the seven twelve academy.
What was the other category, capital, money, unassigned, and?
They had a commitment to um severance pay, but because we have enough right now in our OPEB, that they recommitted those dollars.
Okay, so you can take it out of um reserve funds?
The board can recommit dollars. They had committed those dollars several years ago towards severance. They can recommit those to anything that they wanted to.
Okay, and the capital money too, that's unassigned?
Capital needs to go towards capital, so the construction of a school building is capital.
Okay, but that's only a portion, okay?
Yep, and the rest came from the unassigned fund balance.
And severance. Alright, thanks.
You're welcome.
Additional discussion or questions?
Spencer, Spencer, what were you recommending that we do with the budget tonight?
Um, the main recommendation is that we get a, a budget adopted in some form. If we wanted to talk about it at another time, then we could do it with those reductions not being in there. But I.
Your recommendation, Spencer, was to pass, to adopt a budget tonight, and then at some point, we can always come back and adopt a revised budget.
That's correct. At some point, we need to adopt something tonight.
And that was my motion also, Madam Chair.
Got it.
Tim, did your motion include to um set a Budget Committee meeting to have discussions on trying to write the budget?
It did not, but not necessarily. My recollection was that is there, because we don't have a Budget Committee necessarily yet, so that we'll have to get a Budget Committee and get that done as soon as possible.
Correct. I just made the motion to adopt this as presented, and then eh at a future meeting that we're all formed on which um which deficits and why, and then we can adopt a revised budget at that point in time.
But this budget reflects the cuts that were recommended for Evelyn Gilbert to make, correct, Spencer?
Yes, that is correct.
It's because they're, Randy.
Director Sorkin, your audio is cutting out again.
I just said that it was because it's combined, it's balanced, and it has, whatever, just verifying for Randy.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll do our roll call vote. Director Schoberg?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
No.
Director Lotigar?
No.
Director Addy?
No.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Oh.
Director Sunquist is a yes, so we have four no votes, um eight yes votes, and one unavailable. Motion passes. Agenda item fifteen six is consider property liability in workers' comp insurance.
This is another one we had to quickly um try to turn around and get after the vote. This is another one we had to quickly try to turn around and get after the vote happened. So we did work. Both districts had used Range Reliable to help us get quotes from different insurance companies. Both districts had been with EMC Insurance through Range Reliable. We did get quotes from EMC, and we got one from Ram Mutual for the work comp portion of the property liability workers' comp. The Ram Mutual was substantially lower in the workers' comp, so the recommendation is to go with EMC for the property and liability insurance, and then go with Ram Mutual Insurance for the workers' comp.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
That was Director Schoburg? And support by Director Lotigar?
Correct.
Any additional discussion?
I do have a question, some comments. We said we both have Range Reliable and both use EMC. So did we go out for quotes and bids for both of these property liability and workers' comp, and did we solicit, or did we post and advertise for these quotes?
So we use Range Reliable as our agent, and they go out and contact different insurance companies that hold the insurance. So they contacted insurance companies, and these were the two that they backed from.
There's something specific. Back when Evelyn Gilbert, I wasn't on the board, but we had the same age for years and years and years, and it was discovered that every five years you have to go out or do RFPs for a new agent. Now, is that the case here? Are we getting into that? And now that we're one district, do we start with year one to go up for RFPs for agents or not?
Um, we could. This was a unique situation, as in we had a month and a half to get insurance in place by July one. Just like everything else, we're trying to stay consistent through this first year, and then next year that we can go out and have RFP for agents. I know Virginia, it hasn't even been five years that we've had this agent. It's been less than five years from when we went out for quotes the last time. But I think for quickness and and all the other things that we have had to do as a business office to try to get the the district ready to go today, that this was the route that we thought was the best at this point.
And I mentioned consistency.
Director Lotigar, your or Director Sorkin, your audio is cutting out.
Okay, I you mentioned consistency, Spencer. I I I understand that, and I agree with that. Well, my other question was going to be, now that, does this, it says commercial property, does this also include, I know the lease agreement we just passed tonight with VITA and Joint Powers previously passed one of Virginia, I think, but I know Virginia, City of Evelyn, and for comprehensive commercial general liability for going on their properties. Now, is that part of a commercial property, or is that a whole other category that we need to find out about?
About the property that you agreed to today? Was that the question?
Yes, the VITA, the VITA lease agreement to go on to their property, and I know you had one with the City of Evelyn, the Joint Powers, and I'm not sure, but I think you had one with the City of Virginia too, but they're asking for no less than three million dollars for each occurrence. So I'm just wondering if those insurances are included in the EMC thing when it says commercial, or is that just our school buildings only?
Um, that would be for those except for the one today. That's not included on this. I have to contact Jamie tomorrow to see what if that costs us anymore, or if that's just part of this this quote, and that's just all part of that.
Okay, but it does it does it does include the lease agreement with the with the City of Evelyn?
I'm not sure which lease agreement you are referring to.
It's the same one as the VITA one that we passed tonight. The Joint Powers Board had passed those with insurance assurances with the City of Evelyn. Noel, you must know what I'm talking about.
That was that was an easement, not a lease.
Well, that easement was that you had liability insurance, so.
Spencer, is it fair to say that these things cover all of our necessary needs insurance-wise relating to property and workers' compensation?
Yes, and if they were done prior to tonight, then they would have already gone through our insurance, so they would be included in this quote as well. But I I will check with Jamie to make sure that we're covered on all of those.
Okay, and be adjusted, okay. This has nothing to do with our our disability and our and our, you mentioned workers' comp, but how about their health insurance and their disability insurance? This is totally different. That's
Health insurance is totally different. Health insurance is through the contracts, and both districts continue to use, Evelyn Gilbert uses Peep Insurance, and the Virginia District uses Blue Cross Blue Shield. This is strictly property liability in our workers' comp insurance.
Workers' comp, okay.
Anything else? Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini? That was a no. Direct Director Lotigar?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Abstain.
Okay. Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. So we have
We got Tom. Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. This picture is gone. Uh, we have one no, one abstain, and ten yeses. Motion passes. Agenda item fifteen seven is to consider the lease agreement with Apple Financial Services for purchases of iPads, laptops for student and teacher use. And the agenda notes that both boards approved the lease agreement back in June. I don't know if anyone wants, I don't know if Spencer, you're presenting on this, or?
Yes, yes, both both boards already saw this with the iPads that we we sold the old ones, and these are the new ones. Apple Financial Services wanted to wait till we're Rock Ridge. So that's why we're bringing this tonight for the final approval, so that we can get the lease agreement sent back to them, and they can send us the new iPads.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Director Baraboo, support by Director Lotigar. Any additional discussion? Director Genalini? Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamero?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Lotigar?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is also yes. Agenda item sixteen one is consider a resolution establishing dates for filing affidavits of candidacy. And the proposed resolution noted the dates that filing for candidacy for the Office of School Board would open on July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, and close at five o'clock P.M. on August eleventh, twenty twenty. I would entertain a motion.
So moved, Riordan?
Second by Director Schoburg. Any discussion? Hearing none. Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Lotigar?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamero? And Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Sunquist is a yes. Motion passes. Agenda item seventeen is to acknowledge the first reading of policies, one oh-two, two fourteen, four zero one, four zero two, four zero six, and the form that goes with four zero six, four ten, four twelve, four thirteen, and the form that goes for with policy four thirteen, four seventeen, four eighteen, the form that goes with four eighteen, four nineteen, four twenty-seven, five oh-one, five oh-two, five oh-six, the form for five oh-six, five fourteen, five fifteen, the form for five fifteen, five sixteen, five twenty, the form for five twenty, five twenty-one, five twenty-two, with the form for five twenty-two, five twenty-four, with the form for five twenty-four, five twenty-six, five thirty-one, five thirty-two, five thirty-three, five thirty-four, six oh-one, six oh-three, six twelve, six sixteen, six twenty, seven oh-nine, the form for seven oh-nine, seven twenty-one, seven twenty-two, the form for seven twenty-two, eight oh-six, the form for eight oh-six, and nine oh-three.
Madam Chair, would you repeat that for me?
No. Is that a motion, Tim?
No, I'm just kidding.
No, I mean, is that
I think we should read each one of them.
Each policy?
Not volunteers.
Director Saether will take a motion to accept the first reading.
Thank you, Director Saether. Is there support? Support by Director Addy. Any discussion?
My only question would be, are these all MSBA's verbiage?
I believe so.
Okay, and then the other question is where where will people be able to find these policies? Are they going to be on each, you know, individual website? Are we going to utilize, I believe Jeff started a Rock Ridge website? Are we up and running with a a Rock Ridge School District website?
There's actually, Bill Bryson has created a new Rock Ridge website that will be online shortly.
Okay.
And the policies will, of course, be available on that website?
This, Noel, they will eventually be. We have to go through all of the readings before we put them on the website for them to officially get passed. But yes, eventually, they will be all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Let's do a roll call vote on this as well. Director Mannanen?
Yes.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yeah.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Lotigar?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Tamero? Director Genalini?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. There was a, I would also entertain a motion and second to acknowledge the first reading of the policy two oh-nine, the Code of Ethics.
I will make that motion, Director Lotigar.
I'll support.
And support by Director Saether. Any additional discussion? I've got a roll call vote. Director Anderson?
Yes.
Director Genalini? Director Tamero? Director Baraboo?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Lotigar?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Riordan?
Yes.
Director Saether?
Yeah.
Director Schoburg?
Yes.
Director Mannanen?
Yes.
And Director Sunquist is a yes. Motion passes. Agenda item eighteen is public input regarding the meeting agenda. Do we have any public input?
Could I just ask a question? This is Spencer.
Sure.
Um, I need to get the chair, the treasurer, and the clerk's signature for the signature card. Of course, we didn't have an old one because we didn't exist. Just wondering, when would be a good time for me to get that? Be this for sure by the middle of next week, we would need that.
You in your office?
I'm in my office, so I can run and get yours, Mr. Anderson.
Will you be in your office tomorrow?
I can be if you let me know what time you would want to stop in.
Okay, yeah, let's, I can do noon.
Noon?
That works.
That that will work.
And Spencer, maybe I'll try to, maybe I'll try to run down tonight, if you can, if you think you'll be there for about five more minutes after the meeting?
Yep, I'll be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Actually, Spencer, can I ask to do the same, since I'm right here in Virginia right now, and that would probably
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, and then our next meeting announcement is of the Rock Ridge School Board is Monday, July thirteenth at six P.M. And before we adjourn, I would just like to recognize everyone's efforts in getting us to where we are tonight. I think this is a pretty big deal for us to be doing the work that we're doing and moving forward, and I just I appreciate all the work that everyone has done, and so I thank everybody for that.
Agreed.
Stacy, is this meeting going to be a virtual meeting, or are we going to be meeting someplace?
I I am assuming that it will still be via Zoom, and I can let Noel speak to that.
Um, I did, this is Noel, I did ask school board members to get back to me individually as far as whether they were comfortable meeting in a large group right now. And I do not have agreement from all of the school members to that they will feel comfortable as a large group. So my recommendation for the next meeting would be to continue to have a Zoom meeting.
Oh, who did you ask, Noel? Because I was never asked.
I sent out an email to all Evelyn Gilbert and Virginia Old School Board members. Some people did not get back to me, but of those
Okay, right.
Tell you that you don't, not everyone is comfortable going to a full meeting yet in person.
Okay.
I I would just suggest that if if we had a location where we could meet for those who are comfortable and still have it available on Zoom for those who might yet not be comfortable to meet in in a group.
But I think the only thing I'd say about that is, you know, it seems like it seems like when people are all on Zoom, everybody seems to have better luck hearing each other and seeing each other, whereas like, you know, where Noel is with Marie there and Tom there, you know, we've get we get some feedback, and Tom's not able to hear, and it just seems like it, you know, it should be one way or the other. I know that we need to have a place where public can go do, but it just seems that going all Zoom has been the easiest route for everybody to hear.
But it has not been is as convenient for the public. The public has to submit their their comments to be read into the record, and I would suggest that we allow them by Zoom to get an invitation to speak under visitor input. And, you know, because that can happen. We did it at our meetings, and that can't happen, as long as we're going to keep Zoom. Otherwise, I wasn't going to bring that up.
I think that people are, I think I think that people are notified via postings that they can contact Stacy or, you know, with Deb, you know, to be able to get a Zoom meeting invite to attend those meetings. I know it's probably not ideal for everybody, but
You're right, Brandy. The official thing for this thing said that if you had a visitor input, you were to submit just to Stacy and it be read. And so that's the distinction I was making, that we could zoom in with an invitation for visit. And I think we should as long as
Well, I suppose for now, it's going to continue to be Zoom meetings, but we can continue to address that as as we manage our way through this pandemic.
And I suggest that for the next meeting, if it's Zoom, that we let the public zoom in through this, because it does work.
Well, we can certainly look into that. I know that there are certain challenges as well for adding a bunch of screens to Zoom. I know for court hearings and such, that's still being restricted, so I think it's
We won't have that many. Anyway, I make a motion to adjourn.
I would, I've got a couple things yet.
No.
Sorry.
That's fast.
Turn your mic on. Yeah, I was going to All right. I'll turn it on.
Now I'll turn it on.
Marie, now you have to turn your mic on because Noel muted.
Yep. Noel. Tell Tom to turn his off. Tamero, turn his off.
Noel, turn.
This is why we can't meet all in one room right here, for example.
And like, Gary. Murray? I was now. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
You gotta turn it up.
Say what you're going to say.
Alright.
Submitted in writing.
I think you were just saying have everybody submit their committee requests.
Meeting references or preferences also, um, you've been notified, don't forget, they, uh, it started on the 22nd, 22nd for the new high school. Is there a groundbreaking? No, it's been moved to August, okay? But.
And I'd like to, the reason why you're getting feedback is because you all have devices in that same room. Now, when Evelyn had their last one and I was the only board member by Zoom, it was because the videographer, the, the speaking was coming from the videographer's mic and you have this feedback and this trouble. And so that, that's why you were having that trouble. I think you all have different devices in that same room.
Alright, there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a support?
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Great first meeting.
Thank you all.